I have a reply to the United States of America. Thank you, the Republic for which it stands, for one nation, for God, for individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Sean Keer.
Here.
Miles Flessinger.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
And Doug Bryson and Bruce Robinson are absent tonight.
Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
No, there aren't.
Right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our June 6 meeting?
Sure, I'll move to approve those minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, we come to the public comment session of our meeting tonight, and these are public comments on non-agenda items. We have a lot on our agenda tonight, a public hearings for about five or six different proposed ordinances, so this is not the time to talk about that if that's why you've come to this meeting tonight. It's to talk about non-agenda items. Is there anybody here who would like to offer a public comment? Seeing none, all right. We will move forward with our final recommendation for 2017-02, and this is the economic opportunities analysis, housing needs analysis, and buildable lands inventory, which at our last meeting we voted to recommend to the city council. So, we will be voting on the final order, correct?
The final recommendation. This is the formal manifestation, I guess, of the decision you made in the last meeting.
All right. Shall we have a roll call vote on that? Okay?
So, we need a motion.
Have a motion to approve.
I motion we approve final recommendation 2017-02 economic opportunities analysis, housing needs analysis, buildable lands inventory.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Keer.
Yes.
Flessinger.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Crowen.
Yes.
And Griffiths.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. All right, the first agenda item tonight is ZOA 2017-01 temporary uses. It is now 6:06 PM. The public hearing for file ZOA 2017-01 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in Chapter 17.52 supplementary regulations and exceptions adding section 17.52.80 temporary uses. Temporary use is defined as a special or unique use permitted for a limited duration in a specified time period. The ordinance authorizes the city council to allow temporary uses when they are of citywide significance, and the planning director to allow temporary uses on specific properties when standards are met. Our role tonight, the planning commission's role tonight, in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments on testimony or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council has three choices. It may adopt the planning commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action. The commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare conflict of interest in this matter? Seeing none, I'll go forward. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any planning commission questions. After that, any person may speak up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to our recorder. Will the staff please present its report? Richard.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. This is an ordinance that would allow, as it implies, temporary uses, things that ordinarily aren't allowed on a piece of property but for a limited time are considered to be appropriate to be allowed. There's two different tracks that are in this ordinance. One is for the planning and community development director to grant special use authorization for a specific piece of property for a limited time. The other is for the city council by resolution to grant special use authorization. It might even be citywide, might be on a specific piece of property or individual properties, just depending on exactly what's being considered. So, they are, temporary uses are special or unique and of a limited duration, and I believe the limited duration would be considered in terms of days, weeks, maybe in some situations, like construction staging, months, but not longer periods. And also, we're talking about uses and not standards. So, if you, so if someone wanted to do something that was allowed but didn't want to comply with some standard, a height standard, or a lot coverage standard, for example, where they temporarily have something that's too big for the lot, covers too much of the lot, that's a standard. Whatever use they want to make, presumably it would be an allowed use, but they have to meet the standards. So, it's not a way of getting a variance, is what I'm trying to say. It's a way of just getting permission to use a use that wouldn't ordinarily be allowed. For the approach that the planning and community development director can go through, it's done through our standard land use application process. The property owner fills out our standard application, and then the planning and community development director gives notice to surrounding property owners, and then makes a decision based on standards that were set out in the draft ordinance. And whatever that decision is, then that can be appealed to the planning commission. And the way the ordinance is drafted, the planning commission would be the final appeal unless the city council on their own motion decides to call it up. You get one appeal from the planning director's decision only under the way this is drafted, instead of planning commission and then city council. There are standards for the planning director's decision, and as the ordinance specifies, it cannot be the erection of a permanent building or a permanent addition to an existing building. The site where the use is proposed to be needs to be of adequate size and safe shape to accommodate the use. The site has to have direct access to streets or highways that are adequate in capacity to handle the proposed use, whatever that might be. It can have, the proposed use can have no more than minimal impact on surrounding properties, and the duration of the temporary use has to be the minimum that's necessary, including reasonable setup and sort of mobilization and demobilization or setup and tear down. So, if you want to, if you're doing something for a weekend, it may be reasonable that it be set up on Friday and torn down on Monday, that kind of thing. So, it could be more than just the period that it actually will be in that specific use, but only whatever's necessary. Then for uses of citywide significance, this power would be in the city council alone. There's a resolution that they would have to make and make a finding that the use or uses are of citywide significance. So, the standards that I mentioned up here for decisions made by the planning director would not apply to the planning, to the city council making their decision. So, they have complete freedom, except that they have to make some finding based on some rational basis that it's of citywide significance. What's precipitated all this right now is, we've been thinking about this for a long time, but with the eclipse event coming up in particular, that we need to look at what uses might or might not be allowed that ordinarily wouldn't for the duration of that eclipse weekend. And after the hearing is done, I've got the provisions in the resolution that I drafted for the council. I just wanted to get some feedback from you on that, but that's not part of the hearing, so I don't want to get to that yet. So, that's what I have for the staff report.
Does the commission have any questions for staff? Commissioner Crowe.
If someone has a piece of property that they want to, you brought up the solar eclipse, they want to have camping allowed on that piece of property, is there a requirement for sanitary facilities to be provided on that piece of property, or does that fall under minimal adverse impact?
Were you watching last night?
No, I wasn't.
The city council was discussing this, actually, yesterday afternoon.
I apologize.
And the, actually, the way the resolution that I drafted is written, it doesn't say that, but the council, if they're going to allow that, they wanted it to say that there had to be satisfactory sanitary facilities and garbage service as well.
Okay.
So, no, it doesn't say that now, but it certainly could, and that would, could be like for something the planning director would be dealing with for a specific piece of property for whatever reason, you know, they want to have camping because they're having a family reunion or something like that. Would think it would be normal to say there's got to be sanitary facilities.
And what if they wanted to do that every weekend?
That's not what this is intended, it's for limited duration.
Is there anything in it to preclude them from coming in every month and applying for a?
They could come in and apply.
But do you have any teeth in this ordinance to keep them from doing it over and over and over and over and over?
I think we would reach a point pretty quickly where we'd say, no, that's not what, if you want to have camping, you've got to have camping in a zone where it's allowed.
It could only be applied for events of citywide significance?
For ones going to the city council.
City council, right. So, for those, what other examples besides the eclipse can you think of that this might want to be used?
Well, there could be some big celebration, you know, the 100th anniversary of Lincoln City, or it could be some, one thing we could mention is public health and safety activities, such as an inoculation center or something. I hesitate to get into the emergency kind of things because that's sort of, the way I figure with an emergency, sort of, everything's on the table, you do what has to be done. I don't, I guess, short answer is I'm not sure what else it would be. Up to the council's discretion on what that might be.
I have another question. Do you see this ordinance in any way increasing the city's liability exposure?
No, not offhand. I don't know if the city attorney has any opinion on that, but, no, because I don't think we would be approving things that are inherently dangerous.
I was thinking, for example, food carts that may not have licenses, that kind of thing, people getting sick.
Again, what we've drafted in the resolution is food carts with the appropriate county and state health permits.
Another question for me. How do you see this ordinance being in compliance with the statewide planning goals and the comprehensive plan?
Principally through the process, and as we're going through the land use process that we set out in the comprehensive plan, and that is set up by the statewide planning goals, the, you know, so there's opportunities for public involvement, you know, this hearing and the one next Monday at the city council. The applicable ones that I think would also be involved would be like natural hazards, where we wouldn't be authorizing things, and that would be affected by natural hazards, shorelands, beaches, and dunes. Nothing contrary to the requirements of those, same thing with goal five on the, on wetlands. Wouldn't be authorizing things that are, you know, affecting significant wetlands in that kind of thing.
Do you know of any other cities that are in the path of the eclipse that are adopting similar ordinances or taking similar action?
I don't know. Excuse me, I don't know, but I haven't looked.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Yes.
The use authorization that allows the city council to adopt a resolution, do I understand that correctly, that that would be sort of a blanket approval for specific activities, that the city would say it's okay to do these things if you have adequate space, or would people need to follow up and come in and let you know that they're planning to do whatever they're planning to do?
Yes and no, or I guess both. It would depend on exactly what's being allowed. Some things like food carts, for example, we might want to say, or food trucks, which we don't allow in the city right now, but say for some reason the council wanted to allow food trucks all over the city for a particular weekend. We, for food carts, we require them to have insurance, and we might want to do that with, like if we allow food trucks in, so we specify you have to demonstrate you have insurance before you can do it. You might not have to pay the occupational tax permit, or maybe you do, and that's another way we would find out about it. So, it also could be that the council says you can do X, Y, and Z as long as you come and register with the finance department, the planning department, or whatever.
Okay. And how many calls have you gotten in your office about the eclipse in particular, temporary uses that folks want to do?
We've got a pretty good number of people either calling or coming to the counter. I don't know, Kate, if you can shed any light on that.
I wouldn't say a lot. There are people that call and they want to sell T-shirts or do some kind of food-related business, but we haven't really tracked them. We've just told people to check back with us on this ordinance.
We've gotten a couple of people that want to have camping on their property and that kind of thing.
So, the intent is to get this through and up running, beta-tested, and then...
I think the eclipse is going to be the beta test.
That's what I was thinking, too.
I see this as a way to accommodate the people that are going to be here one way or the other and try to protect the city by having food carts that have house licenses, because if it's true that there are going to be an extra 100,000 people in town or in this coastal area going back toward Salem and all the way to Bend, there is going to be a lot of confusion, and we've got to have something that will handle the extra people because this town gets crowded when there are, it's 80 degrees in Salem and Portland, and people come to the beach in August and September, July.
Do you have a question for Mr. Thompson? Just a comment.
Well, don't, that's my comment, but I think that it is for this event is why it's been done, hasn't it?
That's why it's happening at this moment, but I think it's important to keep in mind that this is much broader than just this event, and it'll be, you know, conceivably forever on the books, so we shouldn't think of it just in terms of the eclipse.
But are you, or is the planning director responsible in a normal event for authorizing or denying a special use?
Under this ordinance, it would be for like a particular piece of property, if somebody wants to apply for it, it would be the planning director's decision, which again could be appealed to the planning commission. But for something bigger than just something on one particular lot, then the city council would have that responsibility, that authority.
In terms of timing, if the city council approves this ordinance, and somebody applied for a permit, and a neighbor appealed that permit, would there be time for that appeal to be heard before August 21st?
Well, the, again, the eclipse event is not something that the planning director's doing, it's something the city council is doing, and actually, there is no provision in the ordinance for appeal. I don't, I guess, I don't know, city attorney, could that be, I don't know who would be appealed to?
Well, if it's the final, if it's the final action of the city, then a land use board of appeals, appeal would be possible if the council, if there is no internal appeal, then it's, the next step is Luba, within 21 days of the decision.
Short answer, it probably would not be heard by Luba before the actual eclipse happens.
Any further questions from our planning director?
If I, I just wanted to add something about the liability issue. When we do have, and I would encourage you not to think about this in terms of the eclipse. I think you should think about it in terms of, we have an existing ordinance, it's called a special event ordinance, and sometimes people come in and they ask for permission to do things on a special event, and sometimes it's not on a city park property, sometimes it's on private property. So, and whether or not they have the right zoning is one of the issues that comes up. So, if you want to have a fireworks sale, and you are a supermarket, you probably can sell fireworks in your parking lot based on the zoning district. But if you're, you know, in an industrial area, maybe not. So, I think you can look at it as allowance to do something temporarily on a piece of property where you don't have the right zoning. That's why we're looking at the potential adverse impact on the surrounding properties. You know, you could narrow this by saying temporary uses are allowed only in the following zoning districts, commercial, and that would, that would reduce the potential adverse impact on neighbors. Take that out of the equation and puts you into a more using zoning to control what the possible, a lot of this is, we don't know what might happen, the way this might be used or abused. The way I had looked at it was, people want to do a Christmas tree sale, or some kind of produce stand, or fireworks sale, and it's something that's not, it may be a special event, it may just be a three-day, you know, celebration or something like that, or it could be a three or six months kind of thing. The issue about the eclipse, I think, is probably, well, it's worth talking about, but again, it's, it's not the, it's not the thing that's out of our control as much as the adopting provisions in the code that lets private parties come in and ask him for permits. I mean, he's saying the city council can declare something of citywide significance, and, but they can also not do it, and they're the control and stop on that. But when you create something in your code that people can apply for, that's the thing I think you need to focus on.
Any more questions from Mr. Thompson? Thank you, Richard. Now's the time for public comment and testimony. Is anybody, would anybody like to testify on this proposed ordinance? Your name, sir? Welcome, come on up, yeah. And please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone.
I'm Stacy Barrett. I think this zoning change would be good for the city, particularly in a situation that I'm in, and this is one where the city's having to deal with something that's getting ready to happen. None of us really asked for it to happen, but it's going to happen. And from my perspective, a lot of the codes in the city prevent and tie my hands from doing anything, and probably by, on design. But things like, let's say you need parking. I can't use my property to let people park and charge them for it. I have to let them do it for free, because that's the way the codes are in the city. Unless we have something that can offset that and give the power to the people at hand to be able to change that, then the damage that I would incur on the property by allowing people to park would not be recoverable. And I think this is the point I wanted to make, is that this gives a mechanism by which I can use my property to offset the damages that I will undoubtedly incur from something that's out of all of our controls. The police department won't be able to do anything to protect the property, they've already told me so. I'm going to have an influx of people come onto my property and just flood me, and there's nothing I can do about it. How am I going to stop 10,000 people? Good luck. You're not going to be able to do it. So, somehow, the damage that this population's going to cause has to be recoverable, and if we don't change something in the codes to accommodate that, then I'm pulling money out of my pocket to cover whatever damages I incur. And this is why I'm for this ordinance.
Thank you. Yeah. Sir, excuse me, do you have a question for?
I have a question.
Yes.
Being that I don't know you, can you give me a hypothetical, what we're talking about, damage to your property?
Okay. The property's 7659 Northwest Logan Road, and it is a piece of property that is orientated with Coastal Oregon Shores property is my neighbor. The Forestry Department is my neighbor on the other side, and there's 5.8 acres in this area, and it's bordered by Logan Road on a short period, short space. Now, it's been in the past 15 years now. been in the past fifteen years now, as we change the VRD rules to allow more and more VRDs into my neighborhood, it draws in more people into this neighborhood. As we advertise more in getting people to come here and spend their money, it brings more people in. This puts pressure on the neighborhood and it puts more pressure on my property particularly. And what happens is every time, like spring break, this last spring break, we had trespassers, I can't--you have to go to the police department, I turned them all in. People use the property to defecate on, they steal. I had twelve hundred dollars worth of gear stolen from me just over this last spring break. All this I report to the police, but there's nothing they can do about it because the population's too big. At that particular moment in time, it spikes and there's nothing they can stop it. They don't have the manpower or the inclination sometimes. But this, I have, I'm on my own to try and stop. So, as a landowner, I sit there and I look and I go, how am I going to do this? I have trouble with the town when it has thirty thousand people in it. How am I going to handle it when it has a hundred and ten thousand in it? And how much damage am I going to incur when this happens? And now I'm pulling eight thousand dollars out just because all these people are here and there's nothing I can do to stop it. I can put up fences, I put up signs, they tear them down and just do what they want. They feel empowered. They have no respect, the public has no respect for private property. So, that being said, I challenge myself, how am I going to deal with this? And how it comes out is that I'm not personally going to be able to. So somehow, I've got to reconcile, how am I going to afford this? How am I going to compensate for the damage that's going to happen? The only thing I can do is try to open the property up, but if I open it up, it's going to get damaged even more. So I need to have some way to offset all this.
So you see it as a parking lot possibility?
I see it as camp sites. I see twelve major campsites with lots of infill on the property, with, you know, the major ones having six to eight each, similar to what you see at State Parks, small ones put in between it, maybe another twelve with two to four occupancy, giving daily passage to people to use our trail because our trail, you know, it gets enough traffic on a normal weekend. What is this going to do to our property? It's going to, you know, first the vegetation will be all trampled out, then the mud will start. I'll have a hard packed, it'll just ruin the whole thing. It'll damage the property. I'm going to end up having to do something to change all that, either replant it or do something to change all that. So these costs, again, the city has no power to change this. I've been down to authorities trying to find out how to stop it and we're not going to be able to. So this ordinance would give us a way to at least maybe recoup some of our losses. And it's not a permanent thing. It's not like I want to do this permanently, but it's the only way I see to try to gain some control on, let's say that there's a fire hydrant and the hose is going full blast. How do I crank it down? Well, one way that I can crank it down is to start charging people. That's maybe one way. As I rent a spot to somebody and they pay money for that campsite, they're going to police their own campsite. I don't have to do it. All of a sudden, now I've got twelve other groups policing the situation for me. So there's lots of angles there.
I've just got to bring up one concern. I think, I like where you're going with all this. There's going to be a lot of people here, but when you have private property and you have people on it that are paying you to use it, you're liable for whatever those shenanigans may be.
Yes.
So how are--does that make it easier for the police to respond to if they're responding? How do we respond to that?
Well, I personally plan on using the same documents that the Parks and Recs uses when they rent their campsites. If you go down and read the papers that they have to sign, each person in the campsite is responsible for the actions of everybody in their group. And this same document, I mean, the state, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. The state has gone over and over and over this and they've got that document dialed in. So there would need to be, on my case, there would need to be that type of security put in place. I've already reserved toilets for the situation in case you guys allow me to do this. So I am thinking ahead, trying to go, okay, is a fire pit in a camp space worth having? And I look at the cause of most of the forest fires, it's not a fire pit. The fire pit is helping to stop the fires. The people throwing their lit cigarettes, cars parked in grasses and stuff like this, this is what starts forest fires. So trying to get a control on the population as they're on your property is better than just letting that free hand and sit back in the front yard and watch the eclipse and watch the people. You don't know what's going to happen then. So it's an effort, I'm not saying I can have total control, but I am saying I'm trying to get some control.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah. Is there anyone else who would like to talk on this particular proposed ordinance? There's a David Costanzo in the audience. Did you plan to speak on this one or another one?
No, I just--
Okay, thank you, yeah. All right. Are there anybody else who would like to testify? Seeing none. Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies? Are you representative?
Yes.
Oh, you would like to talk on this ordinance, please come forward. So please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have three minutes.
My name's Bob Cordell, and I was just saying, you know, there's emphasis on no control for this situation, but it's so easy to take a license plate picture now. You know, they do it for cameras, they do it, my wife goes to horse events if someone's parked on someone's private land, they just take the picture of the license plate where the car is and issue them a fine. I'm not there to talk on that, but I'm just saying, I don't know the, you know, efficacy of doing that or whether it's legal, but I was just going to say, I've seen that done before.
Thank you very much, yeah. Are there any comments from representatives of public agencies? Seeing none. If there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I motionally close the public hearing and the record on Z O A seventeen oh one.
I second that.
If there's a second, Mr. Schonker, all right. What is the pleasure of the commission?
What we're looking for is a recommendation from you.
I'd like to recommend that we pass this motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the City Council to pass, or we pass this ourselves.
Did you vote on closing the hearing and the record?
Oh, we have not voted on closing the hearing. That's all in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
And the record.
In the record.
And the record.
Call a roll, please.
Or it can be a voice vote, whichever you like, but I'll call a roll. Sleszner?
Yes.
Kier?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Crowen?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So Gary, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and recommend that we approve this ordinance as it's written.
Recommending it to the City Council, right?
Right, recommend the City Council adopt it.
City Council, that we approve the ordinance, Z O A, twenty seventeen dash oh one, temporary uses as written.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Mr. Curran, you second it?
I second that, yes, thank you, all right.
Is this the staff recommendation that's listed at the end of the report from the planning director that we're actually recommending?
It's a recommendation of the planning director, us, I believe.
That's my recommendation to you.
Okay, and now we're going to just--
So we decide whether we want to recommend it to the City Council. Discussion? Hearing none. Shall we take a vote? Roll call vote, please.
Sure. Kier?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Crowen?
Yes.
Sleszner?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The City Council will hold a public hearing on this matter on Monday, June twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, at six P M. So if you testified at this hearing, you might want to go and testify at that one also. Going, moving forward.
Related to what you just did, I drafted a resolution for the City Council on possible uses to be allowed, assuming they adopt the ordinance, that they might want to allow for the eclipse weekend. I just wanted to get some feedback from you about what we're talking about. And what it says is that it's for the eclipse weekend beginning on Thursday and going through the Tuesday after the eclipse. It does not authorize camping on the city property or on the beaches. It says that specifically that it is not authorizing that. It would allow nightly rentals as either renting out the bedroom or renting out the whole dwelling without getting a B and B or vacation rental dwelling license and without getting an occupational tax permit. I don't think it can be done to allow people not to collect transient room tax unless they don't advertise and don't list it with an agent. So if they advertise that they've got a room or a house for rent, then they have to collect transient room tax. But if they don't advertise it, they can say to their friends, you know, you can stay in our extra bedroom for fifty bucks or whatever, then they wouldn't have to pay the transient room tax. It would allow people to charge others for parking, camping, or even just entering their private property. The way it's drafted with respect to camping is that it says no campfires allowed. And also, yesterday in the discussions with the City Council about this, they suggested that it also specified it has to be adequate sanitation and garbage facilities. So you couldn't just open up a vacant lot for camping. You would have to have porta potties or something or allow them into the, if it's the vacant lot next to your house, you'd have to have a provision to allow them into the house or whatever to use the facilities there. And it also would allow street vending and sale of incidentals, water, viewing glasses, that kind of thing. Would allow overnight occupancy of recreational vehicles. We allow, like in residential zones, we allow people to store their RV on their property, but they're not supposed to occupy them overnight. This would allow them to occupy it overnight on private property. It would allow food trucks and food carts, subject to county and state health requirements. I have questions here, occupational tax permit, insurance, street vendor license. And my suggestion is, given that these are people who are normally in these businesses, that all three of those things would be reasonable to require. We do for street vendors, we do require it all ordinarily, and I don't see any reason not to require it over the eclipse weekend. And then a question came up about whether to allow, what to allow on sidewalks, because all these things that are in here are really about on private property. What do we want to allow on sidewalks? What do we want to allow on the streets? Whether things like vending, you know, pull over your RV and just camp park on the street rather than in the driveway or the front yard or that kind of thing. And what do we want to allow at beach accesses, if anything, publicly owned beach accesses, which are public right-of-way? So I don't know if you have feedback on any of these things that you think are particularly bad, particularly good, something that we've left out. Just be interested in hearing what you have to say about that.
You know, one of my first questions is, have we thought about the impact on the local people who have paid licenses and things like that and how these would either adversely impact them or whether they'd be at maximum capacity and it wouldn't impact them?
It's possible there can be adverse impacts on them. The expectation would be that, given the large numbers of people here, it may be that they don't have the capacity to go beyond, they don't have the capacity to accommodate everybody that's coming. And or they may end up with just huge lines or something like that that go on forever. The idea behind some of this is to make the experience of the visitors visitor-friendly as opposed to saying, well, we don't want to allow something special because it might, you know, it might take a little bit of money out of somebody's pocket.
Got another question. Do you know if the state's going to allow overnight camping on beaches?
I don't know whether they're going to allow it or not. I know we talk about the tide usually enforces whether camping's on the beach is a good idea or not, but, you know, you don't want to wake up in the middle of the night with your feet wet. So I, I'm not sure what they're going to allow. That's a state issue. We're not authorizing it.
Well, we don't own it, so--
And I think that the intent is to not allow it. Whether they are in a position to enforce that, I don't know.
We are going to have to deal with it because they're going to be here wanting to do it. Who's going to, who do we, who gets called if we see somebody pitching a tent out on the beach?
If what?
If we see somebody pitching a tent on the beach and planning to camp there overnight, who do you call? You can't call city police, can you?
You could call city police, call the state police. Whether they'll be able to get to it and do something about it, I don't know. Physically get to it is another question, but I don't know. And we are going to have, at some locations on city property, actually, people saying, no, you can't do this, you can't camp here, and then actually periodically checking to make sure that no one's camping.
Any other questions?
Yes.
My biggest concern is lessening the adverse impacts to the residents in areas where activities may be occurring that they're not used to seeing or it's not typical. And I guess my biggest concern is maintaining access on the streets. So minimizing on-street use for whatever activity that you're thinking of, because I think that's going to be a big issue for us, is just getting, in the event emergency, vehicles need to get around, being able to get around.
There are some places where actually we're going to post and possibly have someone saying, you know, local traffic only, no public parking beyond this point, that kind of thing, with the idea of keeping narrow streets open. Logan Road is a perfect example of that one.
Yeah.
Past the State Park, we will have some form of barrier and sign saying that it's--
Yeah, I could see a real issue on Logan Road if you have RVs parked up and down Logan Road, so.
In relationship to that, you might want to consider having beach accesses pretty free for emergency vehicles to come in in case there are incidents on the beach, that kind of thing.
Yeah, good point.
Thank you, Richard.
All right.
All right, it is now six fifty-two P M. The public hearing for file, Z O A, two thousand seventeen dash zero two is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title Seventeen, zoning in Chapter seventeen point three two, general commercial, to add indoor theaters as a permitted use, currently listed as a conditional use in that zone. The Planning Commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral-- comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the City Council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The City Council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action. The Commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the Commission wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? Saying none, I'll go forward. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria, or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any Planning Commission questions. After that, any person may speak up to three minutes. If the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Thank you. This would be, well, right now we have a provision in the general commercial zone saying that indoor commercial recreation establishments, including theaters, are a conditional use. This would strike the words "including theaters" from conditional use, and it'd make indoor theaters a permitted use. So in, in both cases, ordinarily, there would be a site plan review for the establishment of an indoor theater, whether it's through conditional use or not. And in the site plan review process, it, it amounts to essentially a, and it's sort of an administrative conditional use process, where the staff sets conditions to ensure that the impact is minimized and so on. And also, both would require ordinarily a traffic impact analysis to look at what the impacts of the particular theater might be on existing levels of service on the streets in the area, and whether it would cause more congestion, whether the streets are adequate for whatever it is that's proposed. Just so you know, the conditional use standards are that the proposal has to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, the site has to be adequate in size and shape to accommodate the proposed use, the streets have to be adequate to serve, the streets and highways have to be adequate to serve the proposed use, and has to be minimal adverse impact on the, on the surrounding properties. And that is essentially the same things we follow in the site plan review process as well. So that's what I have on, on this. It's just a, a minor change to the provisions in the general commercial zone.
Does the Commission have any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Crown.
Richard, um, you, can you tell me why this came up at this point in time? Has somebody asked for a permit that they don't want to buy a...
Refer that to the other, Richard, the City Attorney.
Yeah, simply put, we can either require someone to go through a conditional use, or the code can be changed, so it was...
Okay, then, then the opposite question is, why, do you, do you know why indoor theaters were attached as they were in the previous ordinance?
I, I can only speculate. What I can tell you is that indoor theater use, going through the conditional use process, may be unnecessary if you think about the reason for conditional use processes to require uses that may have an adverse impact on the surrounding property owners, to go through a more public process. It's a little different than a bar or a tavern in terms of adverse impact on surrounding property owners. But again, you can, you can look at it as a requirement for, to look at parking, or, you know, we do have a parking code that requires you to have so many parking spaces for any particular use, so...
I guess what's, what was coming up in my mind was the traffic flow and the parking issues that could be a problem with a theater.
Yeah.
You know, especially a successful one. You know, you could end up with a lot of parking at a certain time.
And we do have a parking code that has non-discretionary standards that's applied, that does not get triggered for existing, like, if there's a change in use of an existing building, if the building doesn't change, then there is no triggering of additional parking. So we, we can't have that situation. But if a new use came in, you're gonna build a new building, then you would trigger the parking requirements.
So we'd have coverage that way, if a new theater was created?
If a new theater came in. If an existing building was however changed, and wasn't changing the building, and I think there's one exception to that, that it would not trigger parking.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Now's the time for public comment and testimony. Did anybody sign up to offer public testimony on this proposed ordinance? All right, saying none. Are there any comments from representatives of public agencies? Saying none. If there is no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record? Commissioner Crown?
I'll move to close the public hearing and close the record.
Is there a second?
My second, Tim.
All in favor, let's do a voice vote. Aye. Motion is approved. What is the pleasure of the Commission on this proposed ordinance? Do we have a motion to recommend it to the City Council?
Yeah, I'll take on this real controversial one. I'll move that we move this on to the City Council. Affirmative action from us, is that...
So this would be file ZOA 2017-02. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All right. All in favor, voice vote.
Aye.
All right, discussion. Hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, please, Kenny?
Sure. Okay. Crowan?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Schlesinger?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, the motion passed. Thank you, Richard, for that. Okay, here we go again. It is now 7:01 PM. The public hearing for file ZOA 2017-03 is now open. The public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17, zoning in Chapter 17.08, to insert additional definitions related to transportation, to permit transportation uses as defined in all zones, to clarify requirements for transportation-related infrastructure improvements with development, and to replace the option of deferred improvement agreements with an option for payment of fees in lieu of improvements. The Planning Commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the City Council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The City Council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action. The Commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the Commission wish to declare conflict of interest in this matter? Saying none, we'll move forward. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria, or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any Planning Commission questions. After that, any person may speak up to three minutes. If the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to our recorder. Will the staff please present its report? Deborah?
Thank you. Okay, some of you were on the Planning Commission when we considered the 2015 Transportation System Plan. It was an effort that went on for about three years. It included approval by the City Council, recommendation from the Planning Commission, and the Project Advisory Committee, and of course, the public. We had lots of public input. We also had the benefit of consultants, DKS and Associates, and ODOT Planner. Terry Cole was very involved. Our staff team included Public Works Director, the City Engineer, the Planning Director, and myself. So when we adopted the plan in 2015, it did not include implementation. So now we are in the process of implementing that plan. And the first, the first attempt and, and effort to implement the plan was in 2016, when the city adopted a number of TSP, Transportation System Plan amendments. And those included replacing the old visions, the old policies in the comp plan with the new vision and policies and goals that we adopted in the, in the 2015 plan. And it also included some changes to Titles 12, that's streets, Title 16, which is subdivision, and Title 17, which is our zoning code. So now, we, we did not include all of those changes that we needed to implement the plan, so now we're cleaning up and, and doing the last group. So the, the three sections of the ordinance include, that, that really have the substance of the, of the proposal, include Section 1, which is to add new definitions, words that we hadn't used previously, that, that now we're using in the, in the plan and in the ordinance, just to make sure it's clear. Sections 2 through 12, which is the bulk of the substantive part, just add transportation as a permitted use in 11 different zoning districts, so one section for each zoning district. And Section 13, changes and adds to the public infrastructure improvement requirements. So now I'll break those down. These are the new definitions that we're adding to Section 1. I don't think there's anything that's very significant about that. Transportation uses is the, is the definition, or the, transportation uses is what we're adding to each of the following zoning ordinances then in Sections 2 through 12. And let me just read to you what that definition is. Transportation uses means transportation facilities, services, and improvements as identified in the Transportation Planning Rule, and then it gives the citation, including the following: operation, maintenance, and repair of existing transportation facilities identified in the city's Transportation System Plan, dedication of right-of-way authorization of construction and construction of facilities and improvements, where the improvements are consistent with clear and objective dimensional standards, and changes in the frequency of transit. So, you know, these things have been occurring anyway, without it being listed as an approved use in the plan. I mean, we have had construction, we have had repairs, and changes in transit on our city streets. So the council in yesterday's workshop asked, why, why do we really need to include it? And staff, it does not feel terribly strongly about this. ODOT felt more strongly about it in our, and on our TSP consultants, who gave us suggestions for changing the code. So we are doing this, and other than adding a lot of pages to our ordinance, you know, I think it'll have very little effect in the long run. Now, Section 13 is, is where things get interesting. This is, has more substance and, and maybe more things that, that you would like to discuss and that we would like to hear your opinions about. This section of the code has to do with public infrastructure requirements, and we typically, these apply to properties that are newly developing or are redeveloping to more than 50% of the existing value of improvement. So very substantial redevelopment or, or brand-new properties. And a lot of the things that we require in this are, that we're not touching, you know, to install curbs and gutters, and have street improvements, essentially, to new properties if they don't already exist, to dedicate city utility easements, to dedicate easements for drainage purposes. And also then, Section D, and D is one of those that we are going to suggest changing, this, this requires installation of sidewalks. But it specifically says in our existing ordinance, five-foot sidewalks. In our TSP, Transportation System Plan, it suggests anywhere, six or eight-foot sidewalks, depending on the location and the, whether it's a, a street that gets a lot of pedestrian use. So that is the change that we are proposing. And yes, it would cost a developer or a homeowner who is improving, making improvements, more in terms of, you know, upfront costs for sidewalk, sidewalks, it's not cheap. So it does come with a cost. We were discussing this at the workshop yesterday for the council, and before that with the staff, and we recognize as a staff that there are some streets that are constrained in terms of the amount of right-of-way, or the, the topography or something, that would not necessarily allow us to meet the standard of six or eight feet. So in those cases, we think that, you know, we may have to end up with something less than six feet. And so one of the suggestions I would make as we move forward with this ordinance is that we put in an except, a clause that, that allows for exceptions in situations with constrained right-of-way, and that would be per the city engineer. So it would be up to the city engineer to determine whether that was feasible, and what would be acceptable instead. So the question here is whether we want to include an amendment that would allow, have a standard higher than the existing five feet for sidewalks within town. So keep, keep that one in mind for a while, and we'll come back to that. This is another new section. This is Section H, and it says that the developer or property owner, when there is a new use or substantial improvement, would provide transit-related improvements. And those are, I think, fairly minimal. Pedestrian connections to a transit stop is, is the first one. And in that case, we're talking about a walkway. Now, ADA typically would require that anyway, if you have a transit stop on, in the right-of-way adjoining your property, and you're building a new use, you would have to provide access. So that is not a really big change in existing policies. The second part is that the owner would have to provide an easement or dedication of land for a transit stop. Now, typically, that would be right up by the right-of-way. Now, typically, that would be right up by the right-of-way. It would probably be in a building setback or, you know, somewhere where it wouldn't be a particularly usable part of the lot anyway. So again, I don't see a lot of financial impact on that one either. If you want to ask a question, you're welcome to stop me during the presentation. Okay, so another new section is that it is the responsibility of the property owner to maintain the sidewalk, the landscape strip, and the curb adjacent to the property. Now, for, a lot of people do that anyway. And, you know, in other communities where I've lived, that's been standard, you know, practice and responsibility of the adjoining property owner. In fact, in Lincoln City, it also is, but it's in a different section of the code. It's in Title 12, Streets. And so this is not as big of a change as maybe you might think it could be. But for property owners who have been unaware of this, this is one more place to put this in the code, just to clarify that it is, in fact, their responsibility. I believe in my staff report, I called out that section of the code in Title 12 that already gives, says it's the city's responsibility to make sure that the property owners maintain their property, or the right-of-way, these things in the right-of-way adjacent to their properties. So this is more for clarification and emphasis than it is a new requirement. And then we get to something that's even more interesting and possibly, something that we are going to want to work on more as a staff. Well, I know it is. I shouldn't say possibly, because as we started discussing the actual implementation of this and how it would work, it raised a number of questions. And so we had an interesting discussion with the council yesterday at the workshop, and we will be continuing to work on it as a staff. Let me tell you a little bit about what's involved here. Say, for instance, you have a homeowner who has purchased an infill lot, meaning that it's already a developed neighborhood, but there's always been this vacant lot. Now, this person's going to put a house on that lot. Okay, so as you saw earlier in my discussion, we require half-street improvements, which means curb and gutter, and sidewalk if it doesn't exist. So say this person, the new lot is on a street where there is no sidewalk or curb, you know, for that matter. Okay, so are we going to require that person to put in the 50-feet frontage of that person's property? Is the owner going to have to install sidewalk and curb? That would be kind of silly. So what we have done in the past is we have said, okay, we will make an agreement with you that you don't have to pay for those improvements now, but in the future, when the city decides to install sidewalk and curb and gutter in front of, on your street, then you will participate and pay your full share. Okay? And Patty has a question.
How does that transfer if the property changes hands?
Well, it is on the title. And so, in fact, I just had a call yesterday from the title company, and they said, we have a deferred improvement agreement from the 90s. Can we just release that? Or, you know, and I said, well, not yet. So let me show you the problem with this. These are all the deferred improvement agreements we have in town. I guess there are about a thousand of them. And we have never collected on any of them. Because they are here and there and scattered around, and to have a city improvement, then... We have so many needs for sidewalks here in town, and so, and for other street improvements for that matter. Some streets, though, we never expect will want to have sidewalk or maybe even curb and gutter. So what we are talking about now as a staff and discussed with the city council in their workshop yesterday was that maybe rather than trying to hang these, have these hanging out there on everybody's property, that we will maybe want to define improvements in a neighborhood, in a vicinity of, say, for instance, in Cutler City. Well, that's maybe not even the best example, but... So maybe there would be a couple of streets in Cutler City where we think sidewalks really would be important. The main streets that connect with the highway, for instance. We would like to have sidewalks there. So we are considering that maybe we would create a local improvement district and then call in those deferred improvement agreements, so that that would provide, and that would, in essence, be their share. In a local improvement district, everybody pays a share of the cost of the improvements. And so we would be simplifying our plan for sidewalks by putting them only in the important places. And then we would ask that everybody in the local improvement district, everybody who's going to benefit from those, whether they're right in front of their property or maybe around the corner, would participate financially in that. And that would replace, then we could release these DIAs, in essence, that these people would support because they would be getting rid of their DIA. They would provide some cash for the improvement along with their neighbors. And so, anyway, so, but this is something that we decided we need to flush out. So as I'm talking about this, and then I'm also going to talk about fees in lieu of improvements instead of these deferred improvement agreements, before I get too much further into this, I would just like to say, you know, we don't really expect a decision on this one tonight. So, yeah.
Question for you. How far back do the deferred improvement agreements go? Do they start in the 90s or maybe even earlier?
Wow, I don't know. Does anybody here know?
I don't know for sure, but it's at least back well into the 90s and possibly earlier than that. And just a minor correction, we, in Cutler City on 62nd Street, when Urban Renewal put in the sidewalk, if you notice, there's a sidewalk where it's real wavy because of every driveway, and there were some deferred improvements along there that were called in. People pay their share of the sidewalk there. That's the only place in the city who had done that, though. And that was 15 years ago or more, something like that.
Thank you.
So anyway, this system of deferred improvement agreements, although in a theory, you know, makes sense, you know, it hasn't really worked well in terms of getting the city to do projects and for these people to get the benefit of that. Plus, everyone who has a deferred improvement agreement on their title, you know, I mean, most people probably don't think about it very often, except when they go to buy or sell a house. And then it's sort of a red flag, oh, what's this? How much could this cost me in the future? And there's no real good answer for that without actually costing out what those improvements would be. So, or the likelihood that we would actually ever install improvements on that particular block of that street. So, oh, this is just another map that also shows new subdivisions. Now, deferred improvement agreements typically aren't an issue with new subdivisions because the subdivisions are required to make the improvements that the city wants. So those lots in newer subdivisions don't have typically deferred improvements agreements attached to them. Okay, so then, our concept, when we were working in the Transportation System Plan and before that, was that it would be nice, rather than accepting deferred improvement agreements that would hang on the title for many years, just to ask for fees in lieu of improvements. So when you build that house and you're on a street that has no sidewalk, instead of putting in your 50-feet of sidewalk, you would pay a fee in lieu of that improvement that then the city could use for improvements in the vicinity, somewhere in your neighborhood that would benefit you. And so that was the theory behind this, and we thought this would be great. And this was the, we actually had a consultant who helped us develop our amendments, and we refined them. But this was what we wrote up. And then we realized how complicated this whole topic is, and what would we do with the DIAs then, and the need for maybe a plan for installing improvements on selected streets that would provide the most benefit to the neighborhoods. So that's why I'm saying, you know, we don't really expect you to go forward with this tonight, but we had already come this far and noticed the public hearing, and we're interested in hearing your reactions to all of this as well as the public's. And then we'd probably ask you to continue the hearing until a later date. Do you have any questions about fees in lieu of improvements or DIAs?
I have one. If your property is on a street with sidewalks in front of your 50-foot of frontage, do you pay the fee in lieu of putting it in and then someone else puts it in? Or can you do that as a matter of constructing your improvement on the property?
Well, we had a little bit of a discussion about that yesterday, and if you're the only one, you said the other people on your block do have sidewalks in this example?
Yeah.
Okay, and so that's really up to the city engineer and the Public Works Department. But typically, I believe that the developer, the homeowner, would put in that sidewalk.
Then there would not be a charge for the fee in lieu of...
No. And if you were always missing this 50-foot length, you definitely, but sidewalks are not the only consideration. It is a half-street improvement requirement. So if, for instance, you put in your sidewalk, because everybody had sidewalks, but there was no, it was a gravel street, or something like that, you know, there still might be other costs associated with this obligation that you are not installing. And so at the time of the development, that's what the city and you figure out is what you're obligated to put in now, what we would like to defer, or what you'd like to defer, and that's how we come up with that. But it is, that was one of the topics of discussion. So if we collect fees in lieu of improvements, who sets that amount? And then we got into that whole discussion of trying to make sure we're asking only for sensible improvements that we really need, as opposed to, you know, sidewalks everywhere, curb and gutter everywhere.
The Cascade has a lot of the roadwork here already, so it'd be treated differently than somewhere down in Macoma.
Well, where we do, where we're going to be doing a whole new development, and that's a good example, then we would expect the developer to make these improvements, so it wouldn't fall to the individual owners as they develop their lots. Those decisions would already be made in the planned unit development.
I think that's, there's an important distinction there, too, that when a new subdivision goes in, the developer puts in curb, gutter, sidewalk, streets, storm drain, and so on. And that money, the cost of that is passed through to the purchaser of the property. Those places that, those large areas of the city where those things were never done, and so the homeowner never paid for them. So in terms of sort of fairness, where it'd be like everybody else, you know, in the new subdivision, the homeowner who benefited basically from not having to pay for those things, when they get installed, they end up having to pay for them.
But the weird thing about this, using the deferred improvement agreements, is that it does pass on the title from owner to subsequent owner to yet maybe another owner. And some of those subsequent owners maybe don't even realize that they have an obligation, and they don't know how much it would be if the city called it in. So it's kind of an odd situation to have continuing. So that was our motivation for saying, okay, let's get rid of that. Let's do something where we collect the fees upfront at the point of construction, and then it doesn't, and then we're done with that. So that was one way of trying to simplify, but we still haven't figured out maybe what else we need to do in order to make this work well.
Any other questions, Gary?
One question I'd have about the fees in lieu of, you know, somebody helps pay for the curb and gutter in front of another person's property in lieu of, but then an improvement district comes along eight to 10 years later and decides to put curb and gutter in front of their street, and they've already paid some money, but they're now in a new district, and they're going to end up getting to pay for their own curb and gutter and sidewalk again.
Again. Well, I think that the city would have to develop, when they do a local improvement district, a system for dealing with that, people who have already made, you know, contributed. And also...
Would that be on their title, too? We already paid ahead.
We already paid. Well, if it's there, it's there, right? So, I mean, it's kind of hard to refute that. But typically with a local improvement district, and then Public Works are, you know, the people who actually, you know, develop these and write them up. But my understanding is that if you, there may be, it may be proportional, the amount that you're charged based on the benefit you receive from the improvement. So if, everybody may sometimes walk on the main street to the highway, you know, but if it's right in front of your property, it may be of more benefit to you than if you live, you know, a block or two away. So I'm not sure how they do that, but they do have advisors who help, you know, set that up, and so that it is tried and true and fair. But, yeah, that's, the idea would be, and of course, if you, if somebody puts in the street or the sidewalk, presumably, I mean, I know there are exceptions, but presumably it connects to other sidewalk, and so it is a usable facility, or else they would have signed, had a deferred improvement agreement, you know. So we hope we won't get in too many of those situations where we have useless infrastructure out there.
Any other questions? Patty?
So Deborah, in the transportation plan, is there identification of the streets within the city that are not conducive to even five-foot sidewalks, let alone eight-foot sidewalks? And are you looking at the particular fee in lieu that you would attach to one of those properties?
We are, we did a walking and biking plan before we did the Transportation System Plan. That was in 2012. We identified high-use, low-use, medium-use streets in terms of pedestrian and bicycle usage. Normally, we categorize our streets in terms of vehicular use, you know, whether it's an arterial or a collector. But so we added this extra layer to describe the streets, and we prioritized in the walking and biking plan which streets we would like to have sidewalks on. So the Public Works Department is going to be developing a plan based on that information and whatever else they, you know, have for information, to decide what are our priority streets in town. And then we're going to try to focus our efforts on those so that we make the most important connections, both in the walking and biking plan and in the Transportation System Plan. We recognize that not all streets would need sidewalks. And so even though we do have a requirement right now, you know, for deferred improvement agreement for any infill lot like that, if it's on a street that we don't really expect ever will develop with sidewalk, then, you know, that just points up the reason why we need a different system.
Looking at the use of a street as the criteria, I mean, again, take Rhodes Inn, for example, high, walkable, lots of people out there walking, no place to put a sidewalk.
Right. So we, I was just talking with one of our engineers this morning, who said, you know, in a 40-foot right-of-way, and many of our streets have a 40-foot right-of-way, we wouldn't have room for more than a five-foot sidewalk, for instance. have room for more than a five-foot sidewalk, for instance.
I just don't want to see people charged fees in lieu of a development that will never happen in their neighborhood.
Well, that's kind of what's happening right now. But, you know, we might take those fees from individual development or from an LID where we spread it, you know, across to everyone and then we just get rid of the old deferred improvement agreements and put all that money towards a good walking facility along Logan, which would probably, you know, benefit most of the people in the neighborhood and make the situation a lot safer for everybody. So that's kind of...that's an example of how we would like to tweak the system so that we can use the available money and commitments and local improvement districts to actually create facilities that are really necessary.
And would the fees that are collected and move improvements, would they be managed in a restricted account and used only for that purpose in the future?
Yes, and in fact, you know, the city manager was saying yesterday, and it should...if we collect fees in Rhodes End, for example, they should be reused in Rhodes End. So rather than saying, okay, we've got this pile of cash, let's make some improvements in Ocean Lake, you know, so that we would tie them to the vicinity where they were collected.
Any further questions? Thank you, Deborah.
Okay, so what I would suggest then is that you take testimony from others, if anybody is interested in testifying today, and then continue your public hearing to either July 18th or August 1st. July 18th is fine, we might not be ready, we might ask you to continue it again, you know, after that. But at least until then, we're not having a July 4th meeting, and so that would be the first...the next meeting. Okay?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Now's the time for public comment and testimony. Did anybody sign up to testify on this issue? Is there any person in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak? Or, I mean, is there any comment from representatives of public agencies on this issue? Seeing none. There is no further comment. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on the record?
Mr. Chair, what we're suggesting is a continuance.
If there's no further comment, is there a motion to continue the hearing until July 18th or August 1st?
Yes.
My motion to continue the hearing on ZOA 2017-03 to the August 1st.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, the motion passed.
Excuse me, Chair, before we go on to the next one, would you all like to have a five-minute break?
Commissioners?
And really what I want to know is, should I go make more coffee because the caffeine is gone?
Please make more coffee and let's have a five-minute break.
Okay.
Thank you. I need some. Thank you.
Rachel on HGTV that I can't remember. There's a lot of houses that have great personality and style often. Not like them, but the range of flexibility, starting with modern or colonial or contemporary, whatever. I thought about living in one and I couldn't handle the stairs and that is a problem. And then I get too much stuff that I just accumulated. I don't like to let go of stuff, although I don't use it. It's a bad thing to hold on to things. My sister has a thousand square feet in her basement in Portland that is just filled up with her in-laws and their deceased, her and my parents' furniture and their deceased. She's keeping it to go out to the kids from what any of the basement is. It's sad. But I'm guilty of the same thing in more people. I think this August 21st eclipse is going to make Lincoln City a parking lot, basically. I don't see any chance of there being able to handle the 150,000 people that are coming to the coast if they do show up.
You know, I think it's gonna...we're gonna fill up. Whatever properties that are allowed to fill up will fill up and trickle out into the county. I don't know if county has plans to deal with it or not.
Or the school district has some nice properties that they could allow to, I don't think.
Probably.
I wasn't aware of the eclipse.
I was last year, but I wasn't thinking that everybody else in the world was aware of it as I was. Now, I'm aware now, too.
My history here, that when it's hot in the valley, it fills up here and the highway by the golf course where you see people trickling into town, a bumper to bumper from nine o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night. And so I'm thinking that with three or four times that amount of people coming in here, that it could be a disaster.
Hunter, for sure.
And that's definitely a thing I'd... Do you have any infrastructure so that people are coming in various directions on different highways?
There's a lot of grid system in the majority of the areas. We're in Latin, so it's just the one area.
Yeah, there's... With this, there's one higher post, there's one access from the valley which is getting in port and then we come up to 101 here, but there's only 101 to get north to Lincoln City and southeast of Lincoln City.
I was gonna suggest to that guy, blow down, but it might not be the right thing. This chute doesn't provide some means.
Is the microphone on?
Yeah, they're on.
Yes.
Okay, our meeting is back in order after our break. It is now 7:46 PM. The public hearing for file ZOA 2017-04 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in section 17.80.050(c-2) to state that vacation rental dwelling land use authorizations will expire if the owner has not obtained a license within one year of the land use approval or subsequently fails to renew the license by the city's deadline. The planning commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony as well as information from staff and present a recommendation to the city council, which will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the planning commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action. The commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare conflict of interest in this matter? Seeing none. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any planning commission questions. After that, any person may speak up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any of the questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. For the staff, please present its report. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. This is a minor change to the vacation rental dwelling land use approval process that we have. By way of background, in the R15 zone, we have a cap on the number of full-time vacation rental dwellings that are allowed. It's 10% of the number of lots in that zone, which since there's 1,940 lots in that zone, then the cap is at 194 full-time VRDs in the R15 zone. We have issued permits for 190...or land use authorization for 191 full-time vacation rental dwellings in that zone. So we're closing in on the cap, but there are nine that while they have the land use authorization, they have either not gotten a license or they have not renewed their license if they've gotten one in the past, which means basically they're taking up room under the cap but not using it. So the intent of this amendment would be to free up that room under the cap for those people that aren't using their VRD authorizations. It's basically a use it or lose it provision where if you've got land use authorization and you don't get a license within a year, or if you have a license, you don't renew it within the grace period, renewal period plus the grace period, then the planning director could declare that your land use authorization is void. Procedurally, what would then happen is the planning director would send the property owner notice that the land use authorization is void and then the property owner would be in the position to appeal that decision. If there's no appeal then, or if the appeal is lost, then the authorization is void and that room is opened up under the cap. So that's the purpose of this amendment. And that concludes this afternoon.
Does the commission have any questions for staff?
Yes, I do. Would it benefit us to reduce the amount of time that they can...that year? Why not go down to three months to renew or get any...what's taking somebody so long that they can't get something done in a year?
You know, sometimes we approve things, approve, give land use authorization, subject to conditions, which would be you have to fix a shortcoming in landscaping or you have to fix inadequate...an inadequate egress window or something like that. We're trying to give some time for that to happen.
So if somebody is renewing, they've already abided by all of those?
Right.
So why do they still need a year?
They don't get a year. They get...they renew every year. So we...it has to be renewed, they have to buy, I believe it's the end of January, and then there's a grace period after that. If that grace period expires without a renewal, then it's just considered, we would consider it void. So it's not a year.
Okay. Okay, that's a little longer for me.
How long is that grace period?
It's two months?
I don't know, I'd have to look.
I have to...I think certainly by the end of March, they have to have applied.
So it's about three months with the grace period in the first month?
Yeah, they have to...normally they have to have applied by the end of January. We start accepting them in the end of November, but they have to apply by the end of January. Uh, we start accepting them in the end of November, but they have to apply by, by the end of January, and then there's a grace period where, you know, people are on vacation, or they, you know, slip to the bottom of the pile or something. But if we don't get the renewal, we send them, you know, we tell them, we haven't got any renewal application, we need to do something about that. And if we still don't get it, then, uh, we would consider it void in this circumstance.
Got a question, Richard. Um, of the hundred and ninety-one that are actually currently being used, do you know if we're drawing income from a hundred and ninety-one of them? Or, or if they're just holding a license even if they're doing all the proper paperwork and paying all the fees, but they're not actually using it to generate VRD income?
I, I don't know, you know, I, I'm not allowed to look at the transit room tax returns, which is where, how we would know that. Um, I did talk to a realtor briefly last week who told me that she knows that some people are just getting their approvals so that they're approved, so they can get in under the cap.
I'd like you to think about, while we're fixing this, to also check on that, because that's another way of denying, uh, another person actually using it in case people are doing it for no, nothing else than a placeholder.
And one, one little, little twist in this is that there is a provision under the licensing, uh, this separate from the land use approval. In the licensing, if you don't generate five hundred dollars a year in income, then your license is void. So, and so, that could then, then figure in, in the, in the renewal in the coming year, um, about voiding your land use approval.
With that low of a number, somebody could just pay that themselves and still never do anything with that VRD?
That's possible.
But then, I'm having difficulty understanding why you said you don't have access to those, uh, numbers. Uh, but the finance department does?
There are some people in the finance department who are allowed to look at those returns. Uh, I'm not, uh, no one, no one in our department is, is allowed to look at those, because they're, they're tax returns, they're confidential. So the people responsible for processing them can look at them, but, uh, people who don't have that, that responsibility aren't allowed to look at them.
The commission has, uh, a person, Timothy Novak, uh, used to fill it, that is responsible for checking them.
We have a person, Danielle Comer, who is responsible for, uh, the land use and licensing aspects of vacation rentals. But she, again, does not have the authority to look at the transit room tax returns.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Townsend, now's the time for public comment and testimony. Uh, did anybody sign up to comment on this proposed ordinance? You're welcome to, and you are David Costanza?
Yes.
Please state your name and please speak clearly into the microphone, you'll have three minutes.
My name is David Costanzo, and I just had a couple of questions, maybe with Mr. Townsend. How many districts are there in the city of the VRDs?
Um, I'm not sure what you're asking, but...
Well, you said this one was getting ready to be filled.
Right, it, it, we only have a cap in the R one five zone at this point. There are several other zones, um, those that are commercial or mixed use do not have a cap. You can have, anybody can have a full-time VRD. In other zones, which is other, basically the other R one zones, nobody can have a full-time VRD other than the people who, who had them before the, the new law went into effect.
Okay, um, how many of these zones are near their cap? And are you gonna treat, are you gonna treat all the zones equally?
There's only, again, there's, there's only one zone that has a cap at this point. There, um, later on, uh, this year, I expect that when we rezone Rhodes End, assuming that gets adopted, there will be a cap in Rhodes End also. But for right now, it's only the, there's only one zone, the R one five zone, there's a cap on a hundred and ninety-four, and they're at a hundred and ninety-one right now.
Okay, so, say if I, uh, lived in another, another zone that, uh, say, does have a cap, I guess Rhodes End would be the next one that's coming up. Would, would you treat me in, in that area? Would you, uh, would I be able to, say, have a VRD and say, well, maybe next year I don't want a VRD, so I could drop it for a year and then maybe pick it back up?
As long as you kept your license in place, whether you rented it or not, it's, it's your own issue.
Okay.
But as long as you have your license, then you would, you would, your authorization would continue.
Well, I feel that's what I...
Thank you for the clarification, Richard, yeah.
I got a quick question, Richard. If, if someone were to have the VRD license, like he was suggesting, and, and do that for a year, and then the next year, keeping their license, renting it out full-time to, to a tenant, would that void the license?
As long as they keep their license, um, there would be an issue on the, you know, the, the five hundred dollars in income, at least five hundred dollars in income from the, from your, your VRD use. If you reported that you had five hundred dollars or more on your transit room tax return, then it would stay in effect.
All right, is there any comment from representatives of public agencies on this ordinance? Are you a member of the public? Okay, you can come up and you'll have a, state your name and speak clearly into the microphone, and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is, uh, Bob Cordell, and, uh, you know, I have a place in Rhodes End, and I pay six thousand dollars a year in taxes. And by the time you go through the sewer and all, everything like that, you know, I'm basically renting it from Lincoln City for about seven or eight hundred dollars a month. And so, what I'm wondering is, if I sell that place, then it, this seems like a game of musical chairs, where the hundred and sixty, hundred and, whatever the, let's say a hundred for just simplicity's sake. So I sell it, and that person loses the right for the VRD, so then they go to the bottom of the queue, and maybe there's a hundred and thirty people now who want those hundred spots, and so you've got thirty people waiting in line. Is that correct?
I think that's the way the ordinance works.
That's the way it would work, yeah, if, if the, the license is not transferable. So when you sell your property, the new owner would have to reapply.
Why is that? Every other license is transferable.
No, no business license is transferable, others, your driver's license isn't transferable. Licenses are not transferable, but...
So if something's zoned for a gas station, you know?
That's different, that's different, that's the land use authorization.
The new owner would still have to get a license.
Yeah, have to get a business license or whatever.
Well, yeah, he'd still have to get a license, but there, he wouldn't have to wait till the number of gas stations drop back down.
Let's keep our comments on this particular, um, proposed ordinance, yeah.
Well, isn't it?
It doesn't apply to Rhodes End at this point.
Well, no, I, I realize I'm sort of putting the cart before the horse here, but I'm, as a property owner there, I'm trying to anticipate the situation, because my wife and I are of retirement age, and so, uh, if we put our place up for sale, we really don't want it as a VRD in the sense that, you know, because you don't know what to expect after each tenant leaves, you know what I mean? So, you know, we'd just rather have it pristine for the realtor to, uh, sell the property, you know? And so we don't really need a VRD license unless, as you say, it's just a placeholder, you know what I mean?
I think there'll be hearings on the Lambs Rhodes End, um, zoning coming up soon, and I recommend that you, um...
And, and the other thing about the cap in Rhodes End, I don't know if any of you have ever been over, well, I'm sure you have, but in the week, like I was just over doing some work on my property, it's a ghost town during the week. It's just like, I, I can't remember what the statistic is, but it used to be like fifteen percent full-time residents. I don't know if anybody even knows that. So do you anticipate, like, suddenly Rhodes End becoming a family mecca or something, and people staying there all the time? Because a lot of the houses are of the type, you know, with sea views and everything, that the average family is not going to be able to afford to rent, you know?
Thank you for your testimony tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And so, the August would be the Rhodes End thing, huh?
I think as early as July eighteenth.
Pardon?
July eighteenth.
Okay.
July eighteenth here, August fourteenth at the city council, also here.
Okay.
All right, um, if there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
Sure, I'll move to close the public hearing and close the record.
For...
For, I have a member here, D O H, is there a...
Correct, yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Oh, shall we vote to approve the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Wait, are we, we're not...
I mean, I'm sorry, we're closing the public hearing and the record for, that was your motion, correct, yes. So, uh, can we have a voice vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Well, I, I like what they're doing, I would like to think that there was some way to find out if the hundred and ninety-one are, are being used or if they're placeholders, you know? For the benefit of the city, if you limit it down to a hundred and ninety-one, I'd like to think that there's a VRD tax, taxes being collected from them, so, you know, if, if we had a way to find that out, it'd be really good.
We may be able to find out if there's some that are not, um...
Active.
But we, they're not paying any transit room tax. I know there are some that the finance department has said they haven't, they're delinquent, and their license should be revoked because of that.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'd ask, if we have some revocation process going, if we could quickly do...
So that, that is handled then?
Yes.
That is a mechanism for that, okay. Is there a motion to forward a recommendation to the city council?
Recommend we forward the, uh, current desire to, uh, on VRDs to expire their land use approvals when a, uh, license expires, I don't know how you put that.
And that's for...
The ZOA twenty seventeen dash oh four.
Correct, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My motion has passed, all right. We're now moving on to, it is now eight oh six, and the public hearing for file ZO eight A two thousand seventeen oh five is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title Seventeen zoning in section seventeen eighty, zero eight zero dash A, animals, to add a provision that any accessory structure for chickens, such as coops, shall be at least ten feet away from any dwelling on the same lot, and also on adjacent lots. The planning commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony as well as information from staff and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the planning commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action. The commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare conflict of interest in this matter? Saying none. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any planning commission questions. After that, any person may speak up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report, Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. You will recall, uh, recently that the, uh, city council had, uh, referred the issue of domestic fowl to the planning commission, and we had a workshop discussion on that, and that, uh, it was your consensus that, uh, the only change in the ordinance that you thought was needed was to, to require that, uh, accessory structures for domestic fowl, which we're talking chicken coops essentially, has to be at least ten feet away from a dwelling, regardless of whether it's on the same lot or on a, an adjacent lot. And that's what this, uh, this proposal does, this requires accessory structures to be ten feet away from any dwelling. That concludes the staff report.
Uh, any questions from commissioners? I have one, if somebody has a chicken coop that's within ten feet of a structure on, any structure on their property or neighboring property, are they grandfathered if this ordinance is passed?
If so, yeah. You disagree, agree? Are, are non, are chicken coops that don't conform with this ordinance, would they be grandfathered? Yes.
Thank you, okay. No more questions?
Is there any requirement to provide a coop?
No. Other than, uh, the laws of nature, tooth and claw, you know, so...
Sure, but there's, we don't have a requirement that if you're going to have chickens, you have to provide them in some sort of...
Right, right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Townsend. Now is the time for public comment and testimony. Please state your name only, and William Cook, you've signed up to talk on this ordinance, welcome. Please state your name and talk directly into the microphone.
My name is William Cook. I'm here to request that the planning commission consider a larger setback than ten feet. My wife and I would like to recommend at least twenty feet from any dwelling. Currently, we have neighbors with a chicken coop, they build it right on the property line, which puts it about ten feet from our home. It's what you see when you look out the window of our kitchen. It's a permanent structure, so we've accepted the fact that it's there. Uh, we hired a contractor to build us an arbor to hide it somewhat from view. Although our situation cannot be changed, we're making this request so that other Lincoln City residents don't have to go through this. Ten feet from a dwelling is simply not enough. We are anticipating a smell as the weather gets warmer and an influx of more flies, as occurred last year. We appreciate that the owner of the chickens has finally done something to prevent them from flying over the fence. Uh, they were spending most of their time in our yard, that stopped. But we, we do ask the members of the planning commission to consider this a good neighbor policy, not a, an infringement on others' rights, but simply, um, by, by not allowing the coop so, so close to dwellings, uh, it's, it's just a better all situation for everyone, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any else who did not sign up who would like to speak on this issue? Are there any comments from representatives of public agencies? If there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I've got one question, I, I just want to be clear about this. Isn't there a, um, guideline stipulating that if you have domestic fowl, that you have to keep them in your yard? That you have to restrict them to your property, correct?
There is a, a provision that you can't have animals at large.
Right, that kind of covers it.
The chicken going into a neighbor's property would be at large.
Okay.
Was there a consideration to place the, the distance requirement from property line and not from the dwelling?
Certainly there's one option you can have, I mean, it was... I mean, it was, I don't recall the discussion, whether the discussion addressed to that or not. It was, basically, we have a thing in the code, a provision in the code that says on the same lot, it's got to be 10 feet away from the house on the same lot.
Right.
And the idea was that it just be 10 feet away from any dwelling was the logic.
But no restriction against building on a zero lot line, essentially?
An accessory structure can't be within closer than three feet from the property line. So you're not supposed to build right on the property line. Have to be at least three feet off of it. But that, if for a single-story house, then conceivably the coop would be eight feet away from the house because it only required five-foot setback for a single-family house.
Like this gentleman explained, he's claiming that they built it right on the lot line, but they would be grandfathered in, so they couldn't be forced to change that.
If it was lawfully established, they would be grandfathered. If it wasn't lawful, this is right on the property line, there is potential issue there for it's not lawful, so it's not grandfathered. For the record, what the gentleman said from the audience was that it was, that it might be about one foot off the property line.
All right. Is there no further comment? Is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I'll motion to close the hearing and the, which one is this one again? Z0A 2017-05?
And the record also?
And the record also.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. What is the pleasure of the commission on this issue? Is there a motion to forward a recommendation to the city council?
Discussion-wise, I'd like to think that animal structures that are used to contain animals on property in the future should be somehow at least 10 feet from the property line. Is there some way we can incorporate that in a different code or is that what it would be in a different?
This ordinance would be the appropriate place for it. If you want to say rather than 10 feet from any dwelling, 10 feet from the property line, then you recommend that that be done.
I wouldn't mind 10 feet from the dwellings also, but 10 feet from the property line, I'd say, is this chicken coops only? Because I'd say dog kennels or anything like that, same issue.
We have for other animals, I don't have the ordinance right in front of me, but other animal things, stables and what have you, there is a setback for those that's greater than this.
Well, I guess I'm wondering why this one's giving the pass.
Well, we didn't have any before and so this was doing something.
And there wasn't, there was the 10-foot limit, it couldn't be, it had to be 10 feet from any houses, structure on the same, on the same lot.
Right.
So that's not new, that was there.
No, but I would say increase it so it's a 10-foot from the property line, so it's not next to somebody's house like has happened in the future.
So it'd be 15 feet or 17 feet from somebody's house?
Yeah, at least.
Right.
So you could make a motion to that effect and see if the rest go along with you.
I'd like the motion that we, as the ordinance is currently written, include also a 10-foot distance from the property line to be included into the ordinance.
And that's for Z0A?
Z0A 2017-05.
All right. Is there a second?
So, just so I'm clear here, so basically what you're asking to do is make it consistent with the requirements that cover kennels?
Yes, or any other animal structure, yes. That would be my goal, is to move this smell 10 feet away from the neighbor's property.
I'll second that.
So second, all in favor say yes.
Aye.
All in, any opposed? The motion passes. Any further discussion?
I believe you, what you had just adopted was, intent was to be a recommendation to the city council, they adopt this ordinance with the addition, not only 10 feet from a dwelling, but also 10 feet from the property line.
Right, exactly.
I think you just adopted that, so.
Okay.
I think you're good on that one.
Well, did we vote on that?
We did.
Okay, so it's passed. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I think, is that it? No, we have?
Nope.
We have one more. I still don't have this memorized. What am I going to do?
I don't know. We all have it memorized. Actually, we'll stipulate to the fact that it's written.
Actually, before you get into, I just need to explain something. The reason we have so many little individual hearings tonight is because when we do something that's like citywide, a large area of applicability, well, no matter where we do it, we have to send out notice to property owners, mailed notice saying there's going to be a hearing, it might affect your property values. Because a lot of these things apply citywide, we have to send them to everybody in the city. So we try to put as much as we can into one because it costs about $4,000 every time we do this. So in the past, what we've done sometimes is put them all into one ordinance because there's a whole bunch of little minor things, put it all into one ordinance. Some members of the city council in the past did not like that because there are too many unrelated things in one ordinance, so we've broken it up into several little ordinances. So that's why we're going through this time after time after time.
So Mr. Apperteller, do I need to read this again?
Uh, yeah.
See, I knew that.
We were just having a debate on whether or not you should have done a roll call vote on it, but since, you know, the reason for a roll call vote is to see how everybody voted and the votes were unanimous, so.
Correct, yeah.
Just knew that for the.
All right. It is now 8:20 PM. The public hearing for file Z0A 2017-06 is now open. This public hearing concerns the city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in section 17.84.020 and 17.84.050, updating land use enforcement and inspection procedures. The planning commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the planning commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action. The commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare conflict of interest in this matter? Seeing none. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any planning commission questions. After that, any person may speak up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report? Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. This makes some minor changes to the enforcement procedures that we have regarding zoning violations. The one thing it does is simplify the terminology and who has the power to enforce, actually to prepare and give a notice of violation to violators. Rather than having the list of the building officials, city engineer, and so on and so forth, it just is, it's changed to the enforcement officer and then there's a list early on of who can be an enforcement officer. Then there's another provision that says before the municipal court can adjudicate a violation, if the violator has filed a timely appeal of the planning director's decision saying there is a violation, and they have, the court can't adjudicate the violation until the administrative process has been gone through. In other words, if I tell somebody that they've made a violation, they can appeal that decision to the planning commission. So while that decision that appealed before the planning commission is pending, the court cannot adjudicate the issue. Then conceivably, after the planning commission makes a decision, that could be appealed in many cases to the city council and even then on up to the land use board of appeals. Once that process is exhausted, then the court could adjudicate it. So it's just setting out, you have to go through the administrative process before the court can act on it. So we had to make sure that, basically, it's for the benefit of the violator to make sure that the, whatever decision that the enforcement officer has made is a proper one and complies with the code. And the third change specifies that where we have, where the city requires a property owner to keep certain records, like for the vacation rentals, there's a, keep a log of visitors, that we can, the city can request to inspect those records. The person does not have to let us inspect them, they can refuse it. If they refuse it, then this specifies that then we have to go to municipal court and get an administrative search warrant, rather than say, okay, you're in violation and by not letting us look at it, you're violating the rules. And this in part comes out of the, there was a Supreme Court case that basically said that's the process you have to go through. So the intent is to make sure we're in compliance with that tall Supreme Court case. So those are the changes.
Does the commission have any questions with staff? Commissioner Cunningham?
Question of Richard, if I know that I'm related to the person that has to do these things, does that put me out of bounds on voting on this?
I'm not following you.
His son is the code enforcement officer. But it's more than just the code enforcement officer, it's me, it can be the city engineer, it can be the building official, it just depends on the circumstances. So it gives questions whether he had a conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest, I don't think so. I want to clarify a little bit. Yes, the Supreme Court case did talk about, you know, the access to records, but our normal process would be to request consent, and if you didn't give us consent, our normal process would be go to the judge and get a warrant. That's the normal process. So this was more of a clarification, in the words of the ordinance, more than really a change, because we would follow that process. Doesn't matter or not we're inspecting your records or we're inspecting your building, we're going to get a warrant if you don't consent. The process, the council actually passed an ordinance a couple of years ago that made changes that clarified the definition of who does code enforcement. That was done like two years ago. This language is just to make 1784 consistent with that. And finally, the issue about discretionary land use decision of the director. So if Richard Townsend makes a decision that you violated your land use approval because your land use approval shows a 10-foot driveway and you installed a 20-foot driveway, that's not a discretionary decision. That's fact. He's not interpreting 20 feet, he's not interpreting 10 feet. It's 10 feet or it's 20 feet. But if he makes a decision that the property is, or the use is not an accessory use, it's rather become the principal use, and therefore you violated your land use approval, which limited what you were doing to accessory incidental subordinate to the principal use. If he makes a discretionary land use call, then the violator has the right to have land use decisions made by land use hearing bodies. So the appeal from Richard goes to you, and if it doesn't, if they don't appeal, then Richard's decision is final. If they appeal to you, and then they can appeal to the council and they can appeal to Luba, basically, we don't have municipal court judges making discretionary land use calls. The judge doesn't determine what accessory use is, land use decision makers decide. Once you decide, let's say Richard makes a decision, your use exceeds the limitations of accessory use, therefore you're violating your land use approval, and then you don't file an appeal to the planning commission. Richard's decision is final. When you go to court for your daily fine because you were operating that use, you can't go in and argue to the judge, oh, no, this isn't, Richard's wrong. Sorry, you're arguing to the wrong body. You have to appeal land use decisions to land use decision makers, not to the judge. The judge could hear evidence about how many days you violated, but he's not going to reinterpret a land use criterion. That's all we're doing, is clarifying that process.
Thank you, Richard. Yeah. Any other questions?
Good.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Now's the time for public comment and testimony. Is there anybody who would like to testify on this proposed ordinance? Seeing none. Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies? If there is no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I motion to close the public hearing and the record on Z0A 2017-06, land use enforcement inspection procedure.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
What is the, oh, let's all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? No. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I'd recommend we move it forward.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll motion that, that we move Z0A 2017-06 as written forward to the city council.
And is there a second?
So that's being a recommendation that they adopt the?
Yes, to adopt.
To adopt.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair? All right. Voice vote, please.
Okay. All right. Cunningham?
Yes.
Crowen?
Yes.
Kier?
Yes.
Slessinger?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. All right. I think that's right. There's no old business, no new business, no planning commission training. We're now in the reports and comments section. And a report from the community development director? Any report?
Okay. Well, I'll let Deb go first.
Okay. I just wanted to mention that this is the 50th year of the anniversary of the beach bill, Oregon Beach Bill. And some of you probably know this, the 1967 Oregon Beach Bill was the landmark legislation. It established public ownership of land along the Oregon coast between the low water mark and the vegetation line. A previous law had allowed public, or privatization of dry sands, that would be from the high water mark to the vegetation line. And in 1966, a coastal motel owner barricaded the beach above the high water mark, and so Governor McCall at the time made a bold move and led, that led to this legislation. So we're celebrating the fact that we can all use the beach now, and we have in Lincoln City seven continuous miles, maybe more than that, of beach because of this bill. They are having a big party in Salem for this event, and it's in Salem, I know. I thought that was very ironic, I know.
Actually, they are bringing sand in.
They're bringing sand from the coast to Salem. They're bringing sand from the coast to Salem so that they can have a beach party. But the reason, one of the reasons they did it in Salem, I think the reason, is because they want to make sure that the legislators come and participate in the celebration and that, you know, realize how significant this is to the people of Oregon. So anyway, I am doing a little advertisement on behalf of the Department of Land Conservation and Development and their party, and this is also, I guess it's actually sponsored by the Oregon Parks Department. I did get a DVD about this, I ordered one about this beach bill. It's the Oregon Public Broadcasting DVD, I don't know if you've seen it, but we thought we would show it at a planning commission meeting for a training, and that should be coming sometime soon. We figured you had enough on your agenda tonight. Okay.
Will we be hiding floats in Salem for the lawmakers to find?
Actually, I saw that, and I don't have that particular one, if you go to the website, oregonbeachparty.org, you'll see that one of the towns, I think it's Gold Beach, is having a float, you know.
I mean glass floats.
Yeah, I know, I know, I think they are. And someone else, one of the other communities on the beaches is having some special event. Lincoln City has now planned one.
Thank you, Deb.
We should invite them out to the coast.
Yes, we should.
Yeah, other thing, I wanted to mention that next month and the following month, you and then the city council will be considering rezoning for Rhodes End, and on the city's webpage now, there is a lot of Rhodes End rezoning information, the proposed ordinance and explanation and so on, FAQ is on there, so I just want to draw your attention to that.
Thank you. So the attorney?
Nothing.
All right, planning commissioners? I have one issue, or one question. I got a lot of value out of attending the workshop session yesterday on what we're discussing tonight, and I was wondering, would it make sense going forward, and with the interest of the planning commissioners, have workshop sessions on, for example, the Rhodes End rezoning, or perhaps have them in conjunction with the city council?
Those certainly can make sense. I will say that one of the things that's under, just relative to Rhodes End, is that on July eighth, not only will be attending the Rhodes End Improvement Association meeting to discuss this, but also at the pump station in Rhodes End on Sixty-Fourth Street, Sixty-Fourth and Logan Road, there'll be an open house for people to come and discuss it as well. But there is no workshop scheduled on it.
So we have, we can avail ourselves of those opportunities to find out more about it? Okay, thank you very much.
And if you want, I mean, we certainly can, you know, we can, if you want, we can have a workshop on, on the eighteenth, here, at your meeting on the eighteenth.
Would you, would commissioners?
Wait, no, 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 that's when you're actually, no, I'm sorry, that's when you're considering it, so.
And we're not meeting on the fourth.
Not meeting on the fourth. If you want to have another meeting, we could do that, so.
I think probably we'll avail ourselves of the other opportunities this time, yeah, thank you. Any public comments on non-agenda items?
Not more than three of you at a time.
The meeting that you're holding in Rhodes End, is that a public meeting?
It's open to the public.
It's, okay, it is?
And it is when?
It's at the Rhodes End Pump Station, at Sixty-Fourth and Logan Road, from one thirty till, what, three thirty?
One thirty to three.
One thirty to three, so. I guess we can advertise it as a public meeting, just to be safe, so.
And what date was that again?
July eighth.
It's the same day as the, as the Beach Party in Salem.
Right, you have to choose.
Right.
Maybe we'll have floats at the open house, though, we'll see, so.
Any other commissioner comments, hearing none? Are there any public comments on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing? Yes, I see. Please come forward, state your name, and speak into the microphone, you'll have three minutes.
All right. My name's Stacy Baird. I wanted to start negotiations, if you will, but I wanted to start with the planning commission about having a, we have a situation in the north end of town that has to do with the public health and safety, specifically defecating and urinating on properties because of the lack of facilities. This happens to the far north. I've been in conversation with Parks and Recreation about the situation, I've also been in contact with the police department in Lincoln City about, extensively about the situation. The only solution that we have come to that we'll be able to do, we cannot stop people that need to, they have the urge, they exercise to get to that end of town, you know, they're not going to stop that, that's going to happen no matter what. The only thing that we can do is maybe try to provide a facility in which they can do this, that would be closer than the Rhodes End State Park to the end of town. I have proposed to Parks and Recs that, and to the county, Lincoln County, Wayside Forty, which is at Seventy-Third Street in Rhodes End, be developed with a single unit there. Now, I talked with Director Phillips, who's the Ocean Shores Director for Oregon, and he has mentioned that they would be willing to maintenance whatever facility we could get there, for, as long as it needs to be. I've talked with the county, they're willing to let it be developed on their property since they own that property. The last step here is I'm trying to get support in order to get the finances, in order to put that unit in place, and that's why I come to you. I'm thinking a three-pronged effort by the city of Lincoln City and the Parks and Recreation Department and the county of Lincoln County might get a solution that's a permanent solution to this situation that's going on. And that's all I wanted to kind of lay out to you. Hopefully, we can work together and get this accomplished. If not, Wayside Forty, I know that there's a ten-foot easement, the south end of my property that great-grandfather donated when he had the subdivision put in, so there's that easement also owned by the county. They mentioned it's not wide enough to put a facility, so that left us with forty, that Wayside Forty, or Beach Access Forty. That is something that will relieve the pressure on this, on the north end of town. So, that's what I'm after.
Wayside Forty is basically three parking spaces wide, sort of?
Yeah, approximately four wide.
So are you talking about placing a facility in place of one of those parking?
No.
Places, or down onto the?
If you look at that particular unit, you'll see that there's the access.
Right.
And then next to it, there's the flat area that's a viewing deck.
Right, right, right.
That is the location we're trying to think about, not the parking, but that.
And that property's owned by the county?
County, Lincoln County. So anyways, I wanted to propose that out there, maybe, you're the first people that I have contacted anything about this, that did the city, so I thought I'd roll it out with you, and I'm going to make an effort to try and gather support.
Quick question. Quick question. How far is that from the current state park up there?
Well, seventy.
Probably about half a mile.
Or a little bit more, yes, because the park is at Sixty-First, or no, hold on, excuse me.
About right, that's about right.
It's about Sixtieth, really. Equivalent of what Sixtieth would be.
About right there, and so you'd go to Seventy-Third, the last house is Seventy-Six.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably two-thirds of the way up to the end of Logan Road.
It would do away with the problem that's been plaguing us for fifteen years, and it's just the only solution that we can come up with, that would be a permanent solution. The powers that be are helpless to do anything, so the only option is to put a facility down.
Is there sewer, sewer serving that area?
No sewer on the county, but we have sewer in the street, Logan Road, and it is at an elevation where it wouldn't be really difficult. The Parks and Recs Director was, Mr. Phillips, was telling me that they would put either one that was gravity-fed, or that we could get a unit that would be pumped once in a while. And again, they were talking that they would be the ones that would be servicing it.
So they is the?
Being Parks and Recs.
Of Lincoln City, of Parks and Recs Park?
Of Oregon State Parks and Recs.
Got it, okay, thank you.
It's not in writing, it was just an unofficial conversation I had yesterday with him, and he was very open to taking on that added labor. Since they have Rhodes End Park there, they would, it wouldn't take a whole lot more for them to go ahead and maintenance that. The county was pretty much broke when it comes to trying to get a fifty thousand dollar facility in there, which is about the cost that Mr. Phillips thought it would run for a single whole unit, unisexed, and that would relieve the pressure, at least for a while. So anyways, that was what I wanted to say tonight.
Okay, thank you for your speaking out on that issue, yeah.
By the way, we are celebrating our eightieth year of continuous ownership of the beach on August fourteenth, our families, so.
Congratulations on that, yeah.
Excited about all this, and it's a, it's good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can make sure we pass that request on to the acting Parks Director.
The Parks Committee?
Who's the city manager and the park board.
Thank you, and our meeting is adjourned.
Stacy.